Chairperson.
There's no progress.
I'm in the chair.
Alright, it is 6:00 PM, so let's begin our general government committee. We are reviewing the floodplain ordinance. Chris, could you give us the background on what is happening?
Well, the background on this is pretty much, we did upgrade, update our floodplain ordinance about three years ago. And since then, there has been a new firm mapping that has been done to the tributary and also to Mud Creek to the south of the community. Because of that, DNR and FEMA have reviewed our floodplain ordinance and recommended that we make some updates to it to make it more modern. And they gave us a sample proposed ordinance. I went through it with Blake and discussed some things. I just would like council's input on some of the items that are here in this new proposed model ordinance. It seems rather lengthy and some of the changes would be significant here. And some, there would be some deletions in the model. Also, that would happen.
Can you, now the point's here. Can you point out like the ones that would be like significant changes?
Sure. Twenty-two, two-three, section.
When was the last model?
Last model?
The last model ordinance? Cause everything highlighted's been added since the last model?
Right.
It's a lot.
Yes, it is a lot. It is very significantly changed. I believe the last model ordinance was in the nineties. So, that's how come there's so many changes in this.
Okay. So, the yellow stays?
Well, the whole thing stays. The yellow is actually new sections.
Right.
First yellow section, and Blake and I talked about this, is the definition under structure. And there's in there highlighted section there that specifically talks about the structure, any buildings, factories, sheds, cabins, factoryville homes, storage tanks, grain storage facilities and/or similar uses. Question is, currently, we don't have any grain storage facilities in the floodplain. Do we want to keep grain storage facilities in that, in this ordinance? That's one of the things that I suggest that we take that out.
Thank you.
Mark out grain storage facility.
Do I chance you have an overhead view of the area that we're talking about?
It's the whole town.
But with like the maps, you know, when you go on Beacon, you can put the map overlay on?
Yes.
You know what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Could you pull that up?
Okay.
So, it's every, that's nice.
Well, it is.
More than, oh, you and me.
The whole town. It's a lot more than what I would think, yes. Yes, that is nice.
So, all the shaded area in this map here would signify floodplain areas.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
I mean, is there potential for there to be grain bins anywhere on there at some point? I would think not.
The only ones that were was the old popcorn place.
Correct.
And those are gone.
Those are gone.
Unless, uh, came a Benton.
That's, I mean, how close is that to them?
I mean, that creep there.
West.
Just north, just north of their facility is a floodway.
So, it's just a question.
But would removing them make our ordinance less restrictive than what's being mandated?
No, I mean, it's just other similar uses, so, I mean, it's just a grain bit, grain storage facility. There's a structure, a few definitions, so, for a new one, we could just leave it. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, there's no sense staying out.
I think we should leave it.
Well, the, I mean, I interject?
Yes, you may.
Please. The only time that team of Benton would come into play is in a flash flood situation because realistically, it's gonna spread to Dudgeon, everyplace else before it stays around there.
Correct. And usually, based on the hydraulic models, it usually is a situation when the cedar backs up rather than it coming in from just downstream onto the cedar. It's usually when the cedar is up out of its banks that...
Cause I don't, I don't remember 2008, uh, that coming into play, but I only reference them if they were to expand.
Yes, if they choose to go.
Where they are now, not an issue, but if they wanted to build new stuff. What about Pioneer? It's also along that.
Pioneer?
You have to jump the road to get over there though.
Right. But we could definitely leave it in. This is, this is why.
Yeah, there's no sense taking that out.
Okay.
Right in there for forever.
Alright, what was your next?
My next one was under the very next page, substantial damage. Damage of any ordinance sustained by a structure whereby the cost restoring the structure to its before-damage condition would equally exceed fifty percent of the market value of the structures before the damage occurred. Volunteer labor and donated materials shall be included in the estimated cost of repair. And below that is the optional language, and that is what I would like to see. The optional language, substantial damage also means flood-related damage sustained by a structure on two separate occasions during a ten-year period for which the cost repairs at the time of such flood event on the average exceeds, equals or exceeds twenty-five percent of the market value of the structure before the damage occurs. Volunteer labor and donated materials shall be included in the estimated cost of repair.
What's the benefit to doing, to keeping with the optional language?
Well, the optional language, right now in your current ordinance, it references back not ten years, but it references back to July of nineteen eighty-seven. So, if you add it on, you cannot exceed twenty-five percent in size or add on to your facility from the date of, that date in nineteen eighty-seven back is when the clock starts instead of a ten-year window. So, right now, you can't add on if you've added on, let's say, something in the nineties and then something else happens and exceeds twenty-five percent of the value of the facility today.
Okay.
It allows for more development in areas where there was flood.
So, would you only be able to add twenty-five percent to your existing structure?
Right now?
Right now.
Right now, it's not fifty?
It is, it's fifty now. It's fifty percent.
Fifty now?
Yeah.
Okay. And the proposal's to change it to twenty-five?
And make it in the last ten years versus since nineteen eighty-seven.
Since nineteen eighty-seven.
So, a lot of places could already be deadlocked because of improvements that were done since nineteen eighty-seven. We've had, you know, structures have been flooded two, three times or more since then, so you wouldn't be able to do anything. This would allow a lot of those places to actually do something.
Would that also not let you rebuild if it was over twenty-five percent of the value?
That's...
Now, you would be able to rebuild at the same footprint. You would not be able to add on any additional.
Yeah, this is, this is talking about...
Okay, cause we talked about the other day, so...
So...
So, instead of...
So, give a hypothetical.
Hypothetical.
Yep.
Hypothetical, yeah.
I wouldn't add on to the shop.
What?
I would, like, I talked to him the other day about adding on to our shop as far as what the restrictions would be. I mean, that'd be a...
So, did your shop flood in 'oh eight?
Yes.
Did it flood in ninety-six?
Uh, I don't know.
Prob- probably, let's, let's...
If it flooded, yeah.
Assuming, yeah.
Let's say it did.
Yeah.
So, technically, the additions that have been done since you took over probably shouldn't have been allowed to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's been flooded twice, causing X amount of damage since nineteen eighty-seven. This would put your two flood events back to two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
So, technically, you would have had no damage due to flood events in the last.
And that's what qualifies a structure to be able to be added on to?
According to this.
According to the floodplain ordinance.
So, adding this language allow, it gives you more flexibility to add on, whereas keeping the old says you can't because...
Because it's thirty-six years versus ten.
Thirty-six versus ten.
But isn't it going fifty percent, twenty-five, you can only add on, or is that backwards? Am I that backwards?
No, you're not.
They are, they are lowering...
How much?
The percentage, but they're also vastly shrinking the timeframe for the damages to have occurred.
What's the reasoning behind, it seems like, twenty percent?
Well, the reasoning behind it is, comes down to insurance. Insurance claims and paying out. Once you have something that's identified in a flood area, you have to pay for flood insurance and it comes down to having continual coverage. But if it's a loss and you're adding on, then that's more coverage you have to get and therefore the loss becomes greater. They wanna somehow limit the amount of losses.
Limit the amount of loss.
Well, if, if something has sustained substantial damage twice in ten years, is somebody really going to add fifty percent more?
You'd be surprised.
Well, and these, these...
Forty-five. Well, I, I guess I wouldn't, so I guess that other people would.
And these definitions, these are, these are like lines in the sand for, you know, say, say your home was damaged in a flood. The ordinance will go on to say, you know, you can do XYZ or you can do ABC if substantial damage occurs. And that takes you back to this definition of what is substantial damage. So, some people, you know, something may have happened and it's between how substantial damage is defined of whether or not you'll be able to rebuild or if you'll have to, it'll be a loss and you'll have to move somewhere else. That's what these are.
I assume it'd be more commercial than residential that would be looking to add on?
Well, not necessarily. It applies to all classes.
I'm just trying to think of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's say, you have, let's say, a school that wishes to add on. It has added on in the past in the floodplain. But then all of a sudden, they realize they can't add on, I don't know, a daycare center to their school because it's, they've added on twice, maybe a five hundred square foot shed at one point and another, a parking lot. And they can't put in a daycare because it, because the rule is, I'm sorry, from April one nineteen eighty-seven. So, instead of that, it's ten years from.
So, this would allow a situation like that to be able to add on twenty-five percent?
Yes.
Is it value or square foot?
It is.
It doesn't mention value.
I assume it's value.
Doesn't it mention value?
Nope.
No, it's forty-five percent of the market value. Market value of the structure.
Before damage.
Substantial improvement.
Yeah. Instead of, well, what happened in ninety-two, you know, well, what happened in ninety-two currently under the ordinance affects you definitely today.
Okay.
Alright, and that's for substantial damage. Also substantial improvement is the same kind of situation here where any repair, reconstruction, improvement of a structure, cost equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure, either one before the start of construction of the improvement or if the structure has been substantially damaged and is being restored before the damages, before the damage occurred. Where the alternative language is that any repair, reconstruction or improvement of a structure taking place during a ten-year period, the cumulative costs which exceeds, equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure either before the start of the construction of the first improvement of the structure or if the structure has been substantially damaged and is being restored before the damage occurred. And I would recommend going with the alternative language on this one as well.
What do you like about the alternative on this one?
It still gives a ten-year timeframe period. Instead of just saying, okay, it's fifty percent, that's it, you never can rebuild there again, it's gone.
So, just keeping them consistent?
Okay. Next portion is the, is the historic structure, one right underneath for substantial improvement. And I asked Blake, do we want this language in that where it says an alternative is exempting substantially improved damage. Historic structures for the elevation requirements of the ordinance by definition would be to handle them individually through the variance process. The option provides a community opportunity to require that all reasonable measures are used to reduce the structure's flood damage potential. Relocating utilities above the base flood elevation using flood-resistant materials where practical, provided those measures do not preclude the structure's designation as a historic structure, if this altered is preferred, the last sentence of the previous paragraph referring to historic structures should be deleted. So, only case in point I could think of where that would apply would be the seedhouse.
So, if we included that, then they would have to make sure everything was...
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Instead of it continually getting damaged over and over again, at least to the best of their ability.
They would have to what?
So, if we didn't use the alternative of not including them?
Yep.
If, so say, say the seedhouse was fully repaired and functioning?
Yep.
And it got flooded?
Yes.
This, the ordinance would require them, if they're gonna do anything, they'd have to go, they'd have to do everything required for rebuilding in the floodplain, you know, floodproofing, flood-resistant construction, all of that would be required to. And then you end up flooding against the historical building stuff of, well, this isn't with the character, we shouldn't have to change anything, nothing happens, or they end up having to vacate and whatever.
The way it is now in the alternative.
Is they're not included, but they do have to come to the city. The city can require them, you know, your furnace, put it up on the second floor.
Yep.
Do that, you know, do whatever you can do to reduce damage that's not going to affect the nature of the building.
Yeah.
So, it just makes those sorts of situations easier to deal with on a case-by-case basis.
But this brings our generation plan into scope too, right?
Yes, it would because it would also, yeah, it would also fall under this. Generation plan definitely would.
Be kinda hard for us to go require them to get all their generation up above floodplain in it.
Exactly. That's how come I'm suggesting, or we're suggesting with this alternative language. So, you know, not to have that additional cost to do that, but I can work with them.
Yep. I like that.
That makes sense.
Sure does.
That's a yes. See, this is exciting stuff, isn't it?
I'm on edge of my shoes.
Did you pay for the hole?
Yeah. What else did I have in here? Okay. Under section seven. Under performance standards. And this is something I kind of struggled with here, under residential stuff, structures, all new residential structure at the very bottom of the page here on section seven. All new residential structures located in areas that would become isolated due to flooding of surrounding ground shall be provided with a means of access that will be passable by wheel vehicles during the base flood. However, this criteria shall not apply where the administrator determines there is sufficient flood warning time for the protection of life and property when estimating the flood warning time consideration shall be given to the criteria listed in Iowa Administrative Code five sixty-seven seventy-five point two-three. I looked that up. It says, well, based off of the weather, based off of other factors, it doesn't give you a time.
Do we have a spot that would become isolated?
For a new build?
Yeah.
No. Unless some, unless somebody bought Wees's field and decided they'd turn it into a development, I suppose that would be, but otherwise, I don't know where else you'd have area to build that would actually...
Is there anything left in Frog Flats?
Vacant lots that would become isolated by floods? Um, I mean, there's a, there's a few lots, but I, as, what constitutes impassable?
Yeah, cause it says by wheel, wheel vehicle.
Yeah, by wheel.
I think we got some pretty big wheeled vehicles if you can get them in and out.
Right, and I mean, how deep, what's the deepest the water's been in Frog Flats?
Well, it's flowed all the way through Mr. Long's garage, so...
Yes.
Yep.
We were able to drive through it though.
Yep, yep, we were.
We're about knee-deep.
So, it's passable.
Yeah.
Just don't go fast.
Go around the other way. Come in from the top.
So, the question is, how much time, you know, because usually when, when there's inundation in Frog Flats, it's, it's typically not immediate when the rain occurs, it's after it occurs.
We haven't had anything since we put in the pond.
Yes, please do that. Please knock on wood.
Nothing's gone through there, so...
So, usually, you know, it may be an hour and a half or an hour or something like that. And then, as quick as it comes, it goes, you know?
Yeah, we've watched it, yeah.
Yeah, we have.
And anything else? Anything else would be from the cedar, and we don't really have anything that that would, would isolate.
No. No, and also the warning time with the cedar.
Yeah, you have plenty of warning time.
A warning with the cedar from USGS.
Well, we did and we didn't in two thousand eight. We kinda had warning, but we didn't know that it was gonna get to the extent that it did, so...
Yeah.
But it still was a slow process.
Yeah. So, what's your, what are you wondering about this? Yeah, what would you like us to do on that?
Well, I wanted to kick around times and stuff like that, or we just leave it as it is with the Iowa Administrative Code and have to make a judgment call on it if it ever gets that high, you know, and if deemed impassable. I've not seen that here.
Who can?
Not for new construction.
No. I haven't seen it. But it's something to think about though.
Well, let's get it resolved now, so we can move on.
I don't know, what is a reasonable time to...
I would just leave it as a judgment call, forget the reasonable time. Because when it ever happens, it's done over in a couple hours typically.
Cool.
Yeah, and I, and if you're gonna go with that, the only places that could become isolated for new construction, you know, how long is isolated? It's gone two hours, you can drive away just fine, does that count as being isolated?
Do we go with the missing persons standard?
I, it probably tries to cover emergency services, you know, if somebody's isolated for two hours, can you get an ambulance to them if somebody has a heart attack, you know? Or can you get a fire truck there if the house starts on fire?
Right.
Uh, no.
No?
No.
What's no?
No what?
Two thousand eight, Dollar Street. Daryl's house was on fire. Gonna get fire trucks to it.
That is bad luck.
But again, new, new construction.
We started off.
I know. Most of the, most of these places that would, this would even be a conversation, new construction wouldn't really be allowed anyway.
In that zone, yes.
We typically don't allow for that. We haven't, I mean, that's a...
There you go. Best judgment of the mayor and the mayor pro tem at the time.
I believe it says city administrator.
That's Chris.
That's fine. Everyone else, I see you problem.
Alright, check, check.
Check. Section D, below in C, the optional language, I just wanted everyone's thoughts about, about um, and substantially improved structures, um, on the optional language. Where the distance between the floor and the ceiling of the fully encased area below, the lowest floor is five feet or more, the applicant shall be required to sign and record with the, with Benton County Recorder, a non-conversion agreement that ensures the lower enclosed area remains compliant with the criteria outlined in section seven-two-D-one. And Blake, I asked you, your thoughts on that?
I think that's a great idea. You know, we don't have a lot of instances of this, but I imagine we will...
Can you explain it to me like I'm a child?
Uh, well, so, we actually have a perfect example. There was a house, um, put in place last year that had to, for it to be in place, had to have its lowest level, not including basement, can basement anyway, um, one foot above floodplain.
Okay.
So, a four-foot stem wall was poured out concrete, which the structure could've sat on to meet those requirements, uh, but then an additional two-foot framed wall was placed on top of that, creating a six-foot-high area underneath the house. This would say, fine, you can do that, but you're gonna record something that says that will never, ever, ever be finished and turned into a lounge room or whatever, three owners down the road. Because, I mean, that's what inevitably happens is, you know, somebody has this weird space that was created to meet some sort of compliance, three owners later, they're like, well, how come we don't use this space for something? And then they put carpet in there and drywall and, you know, fancy...
So, what if they do?
So, what if they do? Good question. I don't, I don't know.
Insurance doesn't pay fix.
Right. Exactly. That's what it would be.
I would assume the insurance company's gonna go span that anyhow or scan that anyhow and say, well, we're not gonna cover this in the floodplain.
I don't know.
I don't know how, I don't know, I don't know how thorough insurance companies are...
They can record all they want.
Doesn't some of this come from insurance companies?
Well, it came from the DNR.
Right.
Yeah.
Influenced.
Yeah. They twisted DNR.
Okay, so the part you have...
Hence the, hence the...
We're learning something at the courses.
Right, I don't like that.
But this, swankers, swankers on the river there, the lower apartments, when it flooded, which has now been sold, but would that affect this or is this just new construction?
Uh, this is all new and substantially improved structure. Uh, this is all new and substantially improved structures.
After that flood.
And those, those are, they're walkouts, they're not, they're tech, that's technically the lowest floor, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure what the flood map was back then, but those probably, I mean, current standards, they, those couldn't have been built that way at all, they'd all be.
But after the flood, there was talk of not being able to.
Use the bottom ones.
Use the bottom, and that kinda went away, I know.
I mean, technically, probably, they shouldn't have been able to go back, probably.
I always said something to them when they're doing that, too.
Yes.
Anyhow.
Yeah, the conversation was satisfied.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Anyhow, so I guess, do you want them to actually go record about the courthouse if it's not really gonna matter at the end of the day, or?
I mean, it matters at the end of the day for the insurance company.
I think it matters at the, I absolutely think it matters.
Your weird little basement floods, and you wanna take a claim on it when you shouldn't have done it in the first place? Which, when you have that, I mean, granted, there's, it's a one-off, but it adds to the insurance cost for everybody who has flood insurance.
Deep questions here.
And this one is a subject.
Thoughts, opinions, feelings?
My opinion is just one more hand for government to get their hands on something that they shouldn't be getting their hands on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, not very.
We think they properly viewed structure by the insurance company before they insure, pretty much tell you what you're gonna need. Now, if they have to record what their floodplain elevation is at their house, wouldn't that take care of it?
I mean, the floodplain elevation is recorded.
So it's already done. So anything below that needs to follow the ordinance anyhow, they need to record it again?
It's just another thing for them to point out and say, you knew you shouldn't have done this.
I don't know about that, we'll be out.
I'm not gonna be the one paying out their insurance claims, so I mean.
Yeah, normal.
Take it or leave it. I think it, I think it's a simple thing that makes sense, but in the end, people are gonna do what they're gonna do either way.
What's the height requirement?
Five foot.
Four or less?
Five foot or less. Here, wait.
Five foot or more.
Five foot or more, sorry.
Oh, five foot or more?
Yes, so really, five foot is about that space where people start to think, oh, I could, I could do something to this.
The kids could sleep down there.
Right, you know, yeah.
Would existing structures be included?
It says, all new and substantially improved structures. Substantially improved only means things to do in the future. But, like Bud said, flood base height and building lowest level elevation is already recorded, so it kind of already puts the ordinance into play.
I don't like making people have to go and record something else somewhere else if it's.
You guys come on in and sit down.
You got about a half an hour before the show starts.
Yeah.
This isn't the show?
Yep.
This is a show.
This is a different show, here, this is exciting stuff.
Okay, one team, no on that?
So, that's a no on that?
I'm team yes, but that's fine with me, I don't care.
Also, team no.
Alright, then, team no it is.
So no on the optional language.
Me too.
Okay, next. Okay, accessory structures to residential uses. Number one.
What section?
Uh, section, same section, next page.
Letter K?
Uh, letter K, one A. The structure shall be designed to have low flood damage potential, its size shall not exceed six hundred square feet in size. Those portions of the structure located less than one foot above the base flood elevation must be constructed of flood-resistant material. My question was six hundred square feet was the question. For accessory structures.
What does our other?
Yeah, what, what corresponds with our other ordinance?
Well, so this is, this is adding a, a special new size for accessory structures for places in floodplains. Whereas currently, the whole town, you, I mean, barring floodplain regulations, you can put up to a fourteen-hundred-square-foot building. Whereas this is saying, if you're in the floodplain, you can't exceed six hundred square feet for an accessory structure.
You're restricted to that size you've arrived, that sort of thing.
Quite a bit.
I think I'm okay with the fourteen-hundred.
Yeah, I'll just leave that, so it's okay.
Well, that, that, that's how good about questioning. Same as the rest of town, one thousand eight square foot, with the whole other fourteen-hundred, so it's out, one.
I've never worked in Harley with our current sizes.
Yes, that's.
Just like this.
Okay. Next que- next one, same section, letter L. Recreational vehicles. And we're not talking about family-built homes, we're talking about RVs that are full, we don't have an RV parking pad currently.
Not currently.
I'm thinking about it.
Question is, do we wanna keep that section in there, or do we not have it at all?
You're just saying, since we don't have one, why have it in?
Well, no, not that, it's just, we just don't have an RV park.
And also about all the ones that park next to a house, they keep and.
Well, people aren't supposed to be living in them either.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, don't we have a?
We have ordinance on RV par- RV parks anyway.
This doesn't even say that they have to be living in it, it just says recreational vehicle.
Yeah, it doesn't specify.
Right.
Whether it's in storage or not.
On the site for less than a hundred eighty, 'cause second of days, fully licensed and ready for highway use.
Yeah, I'd probably just take that out.
Because we have a different section on our.
Yeah, I figured we.
Yeah, as far as living in them, and they're treated as vehicles, as far as our junk vehicle ordinance, but this is saying, this, this is going so far as say, an RV can't be parked in the floodplain beside your house for more than a hundred and eighty days at a time, that's what this is.
And it's always has to be ready to move.
Yes.
And some people don't.
And some of them are hard tied to the sewer.
What?
Yeah.
No one's living in it, it's just there for emergency restroom use.
Just in case.
You never know, I guess.
We've seen things.
I'm okay leaving it out.
Me too.
With what, leaving it in, or?
I wanna take it out. Personally.
Well, if this would've happened back in oh-eight, uh, some gentleman down the street would've moved it when everybody offered to move it.
Yep.
So, I'd say move it in.
Personal responsibility?
Mm-hmm.
Kinda gives you some light later.
Alright, leave it in. Is it just for residential district? I can't, yes.
No.
I know.
No, that's why I have.
For the floodplain.
Me?
I would, yes, I'd like to keep it.
So what is the positive?
What is the positive?
Yeah.
It, it gives me an ordinance point two that says you can't do this, when instead of me saying, you should really move this, and they say, why? I say, personal responsibility?
Touche.
I mean, it, uh, it's the unfortunate truth that my job, every day, I tell somebody something that seems like common sense, the way you should treat your area, the way it affects your neighbors, people need to see that rule in black and white of why they're being told this. It gives them something to argue against, it gives me something to show them, and it just makes the whole process much more, not necessarily tidy, but more concrete. And it, I mean, it's not like, it's, we don't have, you know, a vicious RV's worth of broke-down vehicles in, in the floodplain that this specific section is going to cause an issue for.
But we occasionally do get somebody that just all of a sudden shows up, and one day is just there, and there's two with a man down the manhole, and it's like, what's going on here?
And also, this, this section exempts them from the mobile home, manufactured home requirements for anchoring. So if we take this out, you could argue that everyone who's got an RV in the floodplain needs to do over-the-top anchors and strap their RV to the ground so it doesn't flow away.
Okay, I think it's easier to leave that.
We're coming, we're coming close to the end here.
So leave that one, that's second.
Leave it.
How you doing?
I leave.
I know, but that's okay. You win some, you lose some.
I lost the last one.
I won't.
Section ten, non-conform use. Structure or use of structure, alright, so, come down to Iowa Code four-on-four, uh, letter A, this section, this is discontinued for six consecutive months, in the future use of the building purposes shall conform to this ordinance. Typically, in the code of Iowa, it does state for non-conform uses up to one year, so, in other words, I'm not, everyone understand what that is, something that is built around it, or it's, it's maybe something that doesn't belong in that particular area in the floodplain, that sh- that maybe it's a business surrounded by houses, or a house surrounded by businesses, but it says if it's not in use for six months, uh, normally it's one year. So just wanted thoughts on that. Good session, Ken. One, A. Blake, your thoughts? Six months seems like a long time either, right?
It does seem like a long time, but we all have experienced issues with getting things done when it comes to construction.
Where else does it say one year?
In the state.
In our state code, and in our zoning ordinance is regarding.
I'd rather match one year than a few, but. So this would be like if we had a sign shop, like this house down here, it's the river, and it flooded, and the sign shop couldn't be used for six months, it could no longer be used.
As a sign shop, and rivers up, and rivers down. Or if there were the bait and tackle shops surrounded by houses, and it gets flooded, and then, if they hurry up and got it fixed in five, in eleven months, that they can continue on as a bait and tackle shop, but otherwise, it could not do that after twelve months.
Did I therapy on any of those?
Two teams.
Yeah, I need to get explained to him a little bit. I need you to. So you got that?
Yes, I got that, so with these changes, I can.
Committee recommends I can bring it back to the next meeting.
With all those changes.
All those changes?
Yep.
Get it cleaned up and free of it?
Perfect.
Unless anybody else had any favor?
No, we just confirmed that we don't have any.
Nobody else want to converse about this? Oh, okay, I'll be quiet. Alright, well, thank you.
Excuse me.